Testing one, two, three, three, two, one, check, 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 testing one, two, three.
Okay. Yeah, this is the fourth quarter on Tuesday afternoon. I thank everybody for joining us with this meeting. I hope this meeting finds everybody safe and in good health. With that being said, low call by the clerk, please.
Carrie McGee?
Here.
Greg LaBarson? Greg LaBarson here?
Could everyone, could everyone please mute their phone until they need to speak, please?
We find everybody safe and in good health. With that, low call by the clerk. All right, let me take a break here. Let me, I'm gonna give each and every council person a chance to say something because we seem to be stepping on your brother. So, please do not speak, mute your phones until I give you all the opportunity to speak. Okay, a low call by the clerk, please.
Carrie McGee?
Here.
Greg LaBarson here?
Here.
Deborah Bacon?
All right, let me take a break here. Let me, I'm gonna give each and every council person a chance to say something because we seem to be stepping on your brother.
If you're, excuse me, if you're watching this, please turn off the video. Uh, there's gonna be a 30-second delay and it's just gonna cause a, that's why we're hearing in the background. If you have the video on on something, please turn it off or at least mute it, please.
Okay, we're gonna continue taking low calls.
Yes, Deborah Bacon?
Here.
Gary Cody?
Here.
Ann Dixon?
Uh, this is gonna be a 30-second delay. While we're hearing in the background.
Ann Dixon?
If you have the video on, please turn it off or at least mute it, please.
Ann, Ann Dixon, Ann.
Okay, Nick Gorham?
Deborah Bacon?
Nick Gorham?
Gary Cody?
Here.
Ann Dixon?
Here.
Ed Wazika?
Here.
Everybody, who are you calling, uh, Madam Clerk?
Here, Ann Dixon is here.
Here, Ann Dixon, here. Okay, Nick Gorham?
Deborah Bacon?
Here.
Okay.
I'm still getting a big echo. Is there, uh, somebody got YouTube on? Yeah, if somebody, uh, I don't know if you're playing it back at the, uh, the council chambers, but somebody is still playing, I can hear the, uh, the 30-second delay and it's really distracting. If everybody could just turn it off and watch it on YouTube after the meeting's done. Okay, is everybody accounted for, present accounted for? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, with that being said, I'd like, uh, pledge allegiance, please, please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of, uh...
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible?
It's indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just wanted to add again, uh, if anybody is listening to the YouTube, uh, I was doing broadcast, please turn it off because it's not quite going as smooth as our last meeting did. Uh, I don't want it to be as smooth, and I wanna make sure that, uh, everybody can hear me and the comments after we say. Uh, with that being said, uh, the next item on the agenda will be, uh, a report from the interim town manager on the COVID-19 and its effects on the town departments for FY20 budget and FY21 budget. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to update everyone on the current conditions in Coventry relating to the COVID-19 pandemic. As of yesterday, there were 488 cases statewide. There are now eight deaths statewide. There were 86 new cases over, uh, in the last 24 hours, and we now have 59 people in the hospital. That is up from 41 the day before. I'm encouraging everyone to continue with social distancing practices. Stay at least six feet away from each other and stay at home unless you need to go out for work, shopping, or other critical or essential activities. Do not be in a group of more than five people and do not get together at someone's home. If you're practicing safe social distancing now, thank you. And if you're not, you need to start doing it, doing so right now. Remember, the virus doesn't move itself. You move it from person to person by interacting with each other. We need to work together to keep each other safe and infection-free. Please stay at home unless absolutely necessary. All town of Coventry non-emergency services personnel are working a shift schedule. This has been instituted to ensure continuation of town services in the event that town employees become infected and need to be quarantined. All town of Coventry buildings are closed with either limited or no access to the public. Parkson Recreation along with both libraries are closed with no access. Department of Human Services is closed but still providing critical services for the town residents. Please call the Department of Human Services at 822-9175 for assistance. The Town Hall and Town Hall annexed buildings are operating, but access is only provided after a phone call to the department that you need assistance from. Only critical or necessary issues will be received, will receive immediate assistance. The Department of Public Works Building and Transfer Station are closed to the public. Refuge and recycling collection is taking place on a normal schedule. No bulk or yard waste is being collected at this time. All other depart, all other DPW functions are taking place but on a limited schedule. The Police Department and Fire Department are operating and always available for the citizens of Coventry. The School Department is continuing with its distance learning program. The program was instituted on Monday, March 23rd and will continue until at least the end of April. The USDA and Coventry Public Schools continue to provide free meals for all children 18 and under at Rice Field, 7 Naughty Oak Road. This service is provided Monday through Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. COVID-19 is abs, is obviously having an extreme effect on everyone's personal and professional lives, not only in our town but all across the state and country. We have, excuse me, we are facing a situation like anything any of us has ever faced in the past. We have no precedent to analyze in an attempt to predict what we face in the future. When it comes to the town's budget, its expenses, and more importantly, the expected anticipated revenues, we cannot simply assume that the expected FY20 revenues will meet the projections of last May, and to do so would be fiscally foolish and irresponsible. On March 23rd, I institute a municipal-wide spending freeze. All nonessential expenditures over $250 will require either my approval or Finance Director John Arnett's approval. It's imperative on a townwide basis that we end the current fiscal year on a below budget. The fiscal '21 budget, while not yet reviewed or approved by the council, is now in the process of being analyzed and revised. Assumptions that were made just a couple of months ago about projected revenue increases are obviously no longer valid. Reduction in expenses must be made to ensure that the town has a balanced and realistic FY21 budget. We must provide the necessary and essential services and programs needed to operate the town while ensuring that we have the resources to fund those requirements. I'd like to end this by thanking all of the Town of Coventry employees for their dedication, professionalism, and Herculean efforts during these extremely trying times we now find ourselves in. We're all in this together, and together we will get through it. Thank you.
Mr. President, once the update, I hope that was informative. Uh, I'm, I'm sure there's probably a couple of questions or concerns. I'm gonna, uh, give each council person a chance to ask any questions about town manager. We'll start out with Vice President, uh, excuse me, Vice President, please.
Uh, actually, I had asked the manager a couple of questions. One of my, uh, concerns was, uh, what, uh, if there were any particular services that were on the chopping block or anything at this point, layoffs, et cetera, and I was told not at this time, and again, it'll be on a day-to-day basis, uh, and going on to see what that was. That, that was my main concern. It looks as though the, uh, the services that are happening are, uh, as you said, it looks like a Herculean effort, uh, these people who work for our, our town are, are really doing a great job from what I can see, and trying to keep their spirits up and, uh, move forward in a safe manner. That's, uh, that's all I've got. Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. LaBarson, I would say that I've been visiting with town manager on a daily basis, and he does have everything under control, and, uh, he's doing a great job of maintaining, uh, operations at Town Hall with the best we can. With that being said, I will, uh, refer to Councilwoman Dixon for any comments or any questions.
Uh, thank you very much, Council President. Um, I think everything is moving as smoothly as it could possibly move. Um, I'd like to comment that our interim manager is taking actions very quickly. Uh, the only thing I've noticed is, as I go down the roads, is that, um, DPW is finding that the, uh, trash baskets are very overflowing and people are putting bulk products on the street, so maybe we need to put something on the website to remind people that bulk products or articles are not being picked up right now, and people need to be mindful of keeping their garbage to the limits based on the container size. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman Dixon. Uh, Councilman Cody, good day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Manager, with the, uh, President of the United States approving our emergency declaration by our governor, does that allow any of the municipalities in the state to apply for federal grant money that can carry us through, um, until our revenues return to normal?
Actually, we, uh, we were notified today because it was actually signed last night. Any of our COVID-19-related expenses dating back to January 20th are reimbursable, and we are in process of maintaining and doing all the paperwork necessary to put that in. We're also looking to see what other additional funds would be available. We've been in contact, uh, through the League of Cities and Towns to our governor to see what, uh, what assistance and relaxation of any of the unfunded mandates can take place. So, all of that's being done at, at the present time to try to minimize the effect on the town and the town's budget.
Very good, thank you. Um, the, the, the only other thing that I would like to say is that, um, with DPW working the shift, um, restrictions that they are currently operating under, um, I, I have noticed from driving around my district that all of the essential needs I think are being met, uh, being met. Um, so I, I would like to applaud our DPW employees and our town employees on a whole, um, for the work that they're putting in. Um, I would also like to mention that because I have two school-aged children that live in my household, that the distance learning that was put forth by the Coventry School Department, at least in my house, I don't wanna say it's going seamless, but, um, I know a lot of other communities are having more, far more difficulty with it than the Town of Coventry is, and I would like to applaud our school department for the effort that they've put forward. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman Cody. Uh, Councilwoman Bacon, do you have anything to say?
No, right at this time, I just wanna say thank you, Ed, for everything and to all the town employees for all their dedication and having all the town services up and running for the residents. I truly do appreciate it, and thank you for the, um, detailed update today. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for updating the website also. It has been nice to go on there. You can get a lot of detailed information on there. Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Wazika, do you have any comments? Are we ready to move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda?
Uh, I'm, I think we can move on, sir.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read, uh, B1, please?
Enactment of emergency ordinance.
No, it's off.
Pursuant to Article 3, Section 3.16D of the Coventry Town Charter, the council hereby presents this emergency ordinance amending Chapter 131 Flood Plane Management to comply with the directive from FEMA.
Okay, we've all received, uh, a copy of that in our packet, but, uh, I'm sure that an explanation is provided from the town manager, if you would be so kind.
Actually, sir, I have, uh, our town engineer, Bruce Hagerman, online as well, and, uh, I've got Bruce to give a quick explanation what this is about. I will go into, uh, why we need to do this as an emergency. If we do not have this done by April 3rd, uh, FEMA would send letters out, and any and everybody that currently has flood insurance would not be allowed to, uh, get flood insurance. This was, uh, on the docket, it was gonna be completed on time, and then COVID-19 put everything over, so we need to do this as an emergency basis to ensure that all of our residents that have flood insurance continue to have flood insurance. But Bruce, if you wouldn't mind just giving a, a short explanation on this?
Sure, uh, FEMA occasionally updates the flood studies for different areas within the country, and they have updated the flood study for the Wood Pocket Tuck Watershed, which does extend into Coventry. It's mainly in the area to the west of 102 and south of 117. And what this, what the study does is it changes the flood zone boundaries on two maps, um, within the town. And the, the area that's impacted is mostly wooded, except for one house, which is on, um, seven, at 710 Perry Hill Road, where at that location, the flood zone will extend a little bit further into that, uh, property owner's backyard. However, it will not impact the house, it will not impact the pool that they have in the backyard. The area that's being impacted, based on the aerial photos, is mostly grass, and that's really it. Uh, so for the ordinance, we're updating, uh, the effective dates of two maps and updating the effective date of the new flood study, which is April 3rd, 2020.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Uh, I did just might add to that, that originally when this COVID-19 started, as the town manager alluded to, this was, uh, not an emergency, but, uh, we were supposedly going to get an exemption, then this week, and then all of a sudden FEMA decided that they caused too much hardship on our communities and need to be, that, and acted upon as soon as possible, if they were prepared. But with that, because of the, uh, area affects someone in District 1, I'm gonna allow Mrs., uh, Councilwoman Dixon, who I'm sure she has some questions or concerns, uh, if not, we'll go through each council member, they have a chance to ask any questions, or if they don't have any, just look next. Okay, Councilwoman Dixon, it's all yours.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I do have two questions, and I'll leave them as when you ask the other people for their questions, but I do have one comment. Uh, the property in question in the ordinance is at 710 Perry Hill Road. I contacted the property owner to call his attention to the fact that this ordinance was going to be on the agenda, and he contacted me back, and I'm gonna read the comment he said to me. "Ann, thank you for bringing my attention, to my attention, the plan to enact the emergency flood plan ordinance. I have had an opportunity to review the proposed changes, and although I feared the worst, the changes actually reflect a better reflection of the actual topography of my property that was absent from the old plan. Thus, I have no problems with the proposed flood plan revision." So I offer that into the record.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman Dixon. Uh, then we'll start with, uh, Vice President LaBarson there, if you have any comments or questions concerning this, uh, matter?
No, uh, obviously, it affects one household, and if he's happy with it, um, the only question really is, uh, i-if, uh, if there are future homes that are particularly built in that area, they would be covered by this, uh, by this plan map. Am I correct?
Uh, Bruce, do you have an answer for that?
Sure, so if there are new homes built in that area, you know, from a planning standpoint, we would want to make sure that they're not built in the flood zone. Um, if they have to be, then they have to comply, then that, that home construction would have to comply with, uh, requirements in the floodplain ordinance.
Okay, terrific, answers my question, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson, uh, Mr. Cody, do you have any questions or concerns concerning, uh, B1?
No, I'm gonna pass.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Bacon, do you have any questions or concerns concerning B1?
I just have a quick question for Bruce. Bruce, first off, I just wanna say thank you for cleaning up the ordinance and adding in the table along with the two columns for the FEMA firm panel and the effective date. It does clean it up, it makes it a lot easier to see. Um, when I was looking at, I was comparing the, the old ordinance into the one that's being proposed today, I did notice that we, there was one added, um, map panel, and that was 44003C0102H. Was that just left off the last ordinance? Um, is that why it's being added now?
I, I think it was just mistakenly left off the last ordinance.
Okay, so we're just cleaning that up?
Yep, yep.
Okay, and another question, I was on the FEMA map and I was just reviewing it, and it's just, I just wanted to ask the question. They have on there, it's not in our ordinance, but it is 44003C0101G, and it has the effective date 12/3/2010, and underneath it says not printed. Is that no longer, do they consider that a flood zone?
Um...
I just don't wanna leave anything out of the ordinance, that's all.
Oh, could you just repeat the number for me again?
Sure, sure, it's, um, 4400...
Yep. Okay, I, I don't see 0101 on our list.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of the G-maps have been superseded by the H, by the H-maps.
Okay.
But if it's, if it's not on this list, then, then it probably does not, um, apply to Coventry.
Okay, yeah, it's right above the Mahoney Conservation easement. I just wanted to make sure that, yep.
Okay. Yeah, we did send our list to FEMA to, to verify we had all the maps that were necessary, and we concurred.
All right, I was just, I just wanted to confirm that we weren't leaving anything lost, that's all.
No, thank you for mentioning it.
Okay, if for some reason it, can it be added to this?
Uh, it's, well, we're going to need to do this again in a few months because FEMA is also updating the Kinnabuck Watershed, which is at the far western portion of town, so, yeah, we'll, we'll have to, this ordinance will be updated again this year.
Okay. All right, terrific, thank you so much, and thanks for cleaning up that table, that was really good, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much for that, uh, information. Uh, we've all had a chance to read the, uh, the ordinance, uh, maybe I could, uh, if you think if necessary, we'll have a, uh, let's read your ordinance real quick before we move on.
Counsel, excuse me, Council President, this is Ann Dixon, I do have two questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear everything, okay, Councilwoman, please, excuse me.
Thank you. Um, the first, the first question is on page, refers to page 3 of 28, and it says, "The ordinance shall become effective upon passage and shall be temporary for the period of the emergency only." So my question, my first question is, what criteria are we going to use for determining when the emergency is over?
Nick, you wanna answer that, or do you want, you want me to?
Sure, I, I believe we are basing it on the governor's executive orders. Uh, there are a series of them. I think ours, I think our, our earmarking of the emergency began with the governor's first executive order, if I'm not mistaken, and it will, uh, continue until that order is withdrawn or whatever, canceled, so, um, and, and once it is, then we will, we're going to reintroduce the ordinance the way we would have done it, um, had we not been time constrained as we are to pass this by April 3rd, and we're going to have the, uh, the public hearing as well as the, um, a revote on it. Because that's what the, um, if you read the charter, um, I believe it's Section 3.16, it provides for this process that I just explained. You can pass an emergency ordinance, but it's only effective during the emergency, and if you want to, um, ratify or, uh, whatever, otherwise enact that ordinance on a permanent basis, you have to follow the charter.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, I just wasn't sure what this particularly meant, um, so now I'm clear on that. Um, and my second question has to do with, um, page 20 of 28. It says, "Be permit of $100." I know that we have to pass this ordinance, um, very quickly. I know that we have to pass this ordinance very quickly, and I know that we're going to be bringing the ordinance back for a hearing, so between now and then, I would like to have some recommendations brought forth to the council concerning whether a permit fee of $100 is appropriate in this time and age, because of the fact that many of our ordinances are old, and some of the numbers and fee schedules probably are outdated also. So we can go along, I'm okay to go along with a $100 fee schedule in here now, but I would like to have this number reexamined when we have a hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much, Councilwoman Dixon. Now, Mr. Manager, you want to make duly note of that, and then I'm gonna confirm.
We will, we will, we will add that, we will add that in once we resubmit this for, for the full public hearing.
Okay, if I could, rather, Madam Clark, would you just please read the ordinance real quick for us?
Want the emergency ordinance, the emergency ordinance, number 20-21, read it? Whereas the Towne of Coventry...
County of Kent, State of Rhode Island, is in the midst of an emergency and a disaster, specifically the COVID-19 pandemic that has been declared a public health emergency by the United States Health and Human Services Secretary Alex M. Azar III on January 31st, 2020, and by Rhode Island Governor Gina Vermando on March 9th, 2020, as causing an endangerment of health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the Towne of Coventry. Whereas on March 9th, 2020, the State of Rhode Island Governor Gina Vermando issued Executive Order 20-02 declaring a state of emergency due to the outbreak of COVID-19 in the Town Council, issued an emergency declaration on March 16th, 2020, which was continued and renewed by the council on March 20th of 2020. FEMA has directed that in order to maintain compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, Coventry has until April 3rd to adopt revisions to certain flood plane maps into its local ordinance and obtain approval from the FEMA Regional Office as to compliance. Whereas the council previously scheduled this amendment for a first reading at a council meeting on March 16th, however, the meeting had to be canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas there is no mechanism within FEMA's regulations to extend the deadline for Coventry to adopt compliant flood plane management regulations, including, including the adoption of new maps. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Towne of Coventry hereby ordains Town Code Chapter 131, Section 131-2, is hereby amended as follows. How far do you want me to go?
Right to the end.
131-2 bases for establishing areas of special flood hazard applicability. The special flood hazard areas are herein established as a flood plane overlay district. The district includes all special flood hazard areas within the Towne of Coventry designated as Zone A, AE, AH, AO, 899, V or VE on the Kent County Flood Insurance Rate Map and digital firm issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the administration of the National Flood Insurance Program. The map panels of the Kent, the map panels of the Kent County Firm that are wholly or partially within the Towne of Coventry are shown in the table. The exact boundaries of the district may be defined by the 1% base flood elevation shown on the firm and further defined by the Kent County Flood Insurance Study, the FIS report dated April 3rd, 2020. The firm and the FIS report and any revisions thereto are incorporated herein by reference and are on file with the Planning Department.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Madam Clark. With that being said, we've had our questions answered. The chair will entertain a motion.
Gary.
Council President, this is Ann Dixon. I make a motion to, pursuant to Article 3, Section 3.16D of the Coventry Town Charter, to approve the emergency ordinance amending Chapter 131 Flood Plane Management to comply with the directive from FEMA.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman Dixon. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a second by Councilwoman President, Greg LeBosse there. Madam Clark, all in favor? We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Carrie McGee?
Aye.
Greg LeBosse there?
Aye.
Deborah Bacon?
Aye.
Gary Cody?
Aye.
And Ann Dixon?
Aye.
Okay, we're all in favor. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clark, the next item on your agenda would be C1. Would you please do that?
Approval of the Revised Budget Calendar.
Okay, we've all had a chance to look at this, and we've had revised the calendar, but the town manager has been in close conversations with local cities and the county manager, and this may even change again in the future if things do not settle. But has it now? This is our revised schedule. You've all had a chance to look at it. Are there any questions? I'll start out with Councilwoman, Councilman LeBosse there. Vice President LeBosse there, do you have any questions on that?
No, I don't. I think that with everything being in the air, we've got to lay out some dates, and everything is subject to change, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Dixon, do you have any questions or concerns?
I do have a question. The calendar includes meetings with the school department, and I just want to know if the school department is agreeable to the dates that we have on our calendars, specifically May 6th and May 18th.
Okay, town manager, you had the opportunity to talk with schools here again. This is all subject to change, but I believe that you've probably been coordinated and respected saying that with the schools.
These dates are, these dates are in compliance with what we were, we moved it back from the charter, and, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to do a, some type of conference call meeting on that, on that date, those dates, if, if we can even do it at that point. We're looking at a bunch of different things for relief from the state. A lot of these dates may or may not even hold. This is just simply to give us some time currently to assess what's going on. So those dates would be agreed upon at, at a point with the school committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Cody, do you have any questions or concerns on the new schedule?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bacon, Councilwoman Bacon, do you have any questions or concerns in the new schedule?
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. What I did notice on that we don't have the department heads, where we normally have our town department heads come in and meet with council, that date is not on there, and neither is a work session with the school committee. We're just going right to the public hearing. We're not going to have a work session with them.
No, ma'am.
So I was wondering if those dates were going to be added.
Those dates will be added. They, they, again, we've got to be able to set up and come up with a, a solution to how we're going to do those. They will be added in once we have that prior to the, the public hearing on this. So we will be having them. The dates at this point are still up in the air. These are all the dates that were on the previous calendar going forward. That's what we moved backwards by one month. Those others will have to be added in as special meetings, and we will add them in as, as soon as we can get them.
As needed?
Yeah, we do, we need them, we need them, but we just got to be able to schedule them and come up with a solution on how to do it the best way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, so now we've decided on the calendar, the chair will entertain a motion to accept this change in calendar.
Gary Cody, I would like to make a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
We have a motion.
Ann Dixon, I second the motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Madam Clark, if you take a roll call vote, please. All in favor?
Carrie McGee?
Aye.
Greg LeBosse there?
Aye.
Deborah Bacon?
Aye.
Gary Cody?
Aye.
Ann Dixon?
Aye.
Okay, I agree. Motion carries. I thank everybody for attending this meeting. Once again, we just want to say that I hope everybody continues to stay safe and adhere to all the rules and regulations. I want to make sure the whole town, include all our council members and people who work for the town, are, are safe and healthy. With that being said, the chairman is in order. Motion, please.
John, Gary Cody.
We have a motion to, and we have a second by Councilwoman Dixon. All in favor? Roll call vote for the question.
Carrie McGee?
Aye.
Greg LeBosse there?
Aye.
Deborah Bacon?
Aye.
Gary Cody?
Aye.
Ann Dixon?
Aye.
The eyes have it. Motion to adj, meeting adjourned. Thank you again. Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.